Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Se go ani buju and yo wachaya kwekwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as the gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all, as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that, we will officially call to order. And just again to highlight that this is our first meeting in the month of June, which is Indigenous Peoples' Month in the City of Kingston. And so in recognition of that, we are displaying the talking stick here at our council meeting, which of course was a gift from our Aboriginal or Indigenous community, and speaks of the importance and vision for our continued growth in our relationship between Indigenous and non-Indigenous in our community. So, we have called to order. Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have quorum.
Okay, thank you. We have nothing under Committee of the Whole closed meeting. Next, we will move to approval of the addits. We have an addition to report number forty-six, an addition to report number forty-seven, and some communications. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Neal, seconded by Councillor O'Sannick. All those in favour, please vote. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Yes, Councillor Bohm.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. This is for a previous meeting on Tuesday, May twenty-first. I, Ryan Bohm of the Council of Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause one and two, Report number forty-four. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, it may be perceived that I have pecuniary interest in these matters. That's already been submitted to the Clerk, and then I have one additional one for this evening. I, Ryan Bohm of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause one, Report forty-seven. As an employee of Utilities Kingston, I declare conflict insofar as this motion relates to Utilities Kingston, and ask that it be separated out so that I'm able, if possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Through you. I, Robert Kylie of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Clause one, Report forty-eight, and associated bylaws four and five, as I own an adjacent property to three oh three York Street.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no other declarations, we will move on. We have no presentations this evening. We have no delegations. Yes, Councillor Neal?
Thank you. I do have an added delegation, if I might. Moved by myself, seconded by Councillor O'Sannick. Hereby moved to waive bylaw two thousand and ten dash one in order to allow Chris Ackerman to present a delegation regarding Committee of the Whole First Capital Filming Opportunities Information Report.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to add a delegation. Is there a seconder? Oh, sorry. Oh, it was seconded by Councillor O'Sannick. Thank you. Okay, so we will call the vote. Please vote. And that carries. Okay, seeing no other delegations to be added, at this time, I will invite Mr. Ackerman to come and to speak to council with respect to Information Report number one, First Capital Place Filming Opportunities. Mr. Ackerman? And just a note to our delegations that you have five minutes.
Good evening. I'm Chris Ackerman from the market, the KMPVA. Family's been coming to the market for over fifty years. I'm third generation. Grandparents were here in the sixties. I've grown up coming to market since I was five years old. So now in my mid-fifties, I wonder if I'm being able to continue making my living here. It's my primary income, as it is for many others on the market. I've received, I recently purchased the farm from my parents as they moved to Bowel, and need to ensure for myself and many others we can continue to earn an income here. Two years ago, we were told that we could not vend on a weekend in August because we're going to use the space for the already tragically hit concert on the big screen. Lawyers were hired, letters were exchanged, and I'm sure bad feelings still are present. I know that weekend cost me thousands of dollars of lost income even though we were here, but it was closed off. We were sure that nothing else like this would ever happen again, but here we are. Once again, we're being asked to give up our livelihoods so that a movie company can come in and rent what we've already rented from the city. It's just, it just makes things awful hard. I'm here to address the recent proposal of being moved from Springer Market in the event of a movie production. We have indeed met with city staff, but by no means have come to any kind of understanding on the subject. The proposed site of the old Sugarman parking lot on Ontario's and Brock streets is simply unacceptable. Recently, while I was chatting with one of the Sunday market vendors, back in two thousand and six, when we were on Clarence Street, one weekend he did seventy-five dollars in sales, and he thought, like, I can't, I can't make a living here. He moved back to the market, and where you could be seen from, well, you can be seen from Leon Centre, the, what is it, Food Basics down there. He hundred percent, he did sixty-five hundred dollars that weekend. So that was quite a difference in being in a different location. So this is why I'm very concerned and have come to this meeting to to have you understand the fate of forty-five small businesses in the normal market and then the Sunday market, there's another forty-five people. So that's like ninety small little businesses that operate on this market every week. We just met Thursday night, and CKWS was around the market asking questions about being resettuated on the parking lot on Brock and Ontario Streets on Saturday. So I was kind of in shock because we'd just, we'd decided nothing at the meeting. I don't, I just said, like, where do you get your information from? So we were told by the city staff that nothing had been booked for filming. There were some inquiries for the market square as well as the prison firm, or the prison for filming. We were just feeling that we're going to get trampled in the process, and none of us could afford to. It has already been a lousy start to the market season with the weather the last six months. Many of us barely getting by, so to uproot us, and we'd put a final nail in our coffin. And the long-term effects, like, long-term effects, I cannot even imagine because how often do you go to a store and it's closed or whatever? How often are you going to go back to that store? Like, how many? You just find someplace else to shop, so then you've lost, you've lost your customer. My concern just remains on all these businesses, small business owners. They have to pay mortgages, hydros, hydro bills, taxes, heating bills, and other monthly bills. And I hear tourists every week, when we have tourists, when it's nice weather with not raining all the time, go by the market and say, ooh, I wish we had a market like this where we live. It's, it's so great. So we're a big tourist attraction. We have a lot of people come through there. Even, even after the end of October, we still have like four, three, four tour buses come in November, every Saturday.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. It's a big time tourist attraction, not to mention the oldest continuing running market in all of Canada. Over two hundred years, and that's pretty impressive. I just, I just, boggles my mind. I mean, I just don't know how we'd possibly operate someplace else. Anyway, thanks for hearing me out.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for the delegation? Sir? Sir? Mr. Ackerman, I will just ask you to stay because if there might be some questions. Yes, Councillor Bohm?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. I'd just like to ask, is, what in your mind would be like a reasonable compromise? Like kind of a middle ground where you could still have the usage kind of both ways, and that way allow these other sort of functions to exist as well?
Yeah, I, I just don't even, I don't know the answer. I just know that parking lot is no way gonna help, gonna work. We're, we're meeting on Saturday. There's been a couple other thoughts that, you know how you have the, what do you call that? The, when you shut down the Princess Street for the
Promenade?
Promenade. Some people are saying that'd be really cool, that if we were on Princess Street, that would, that would be acceptable. Putting us on that Sugarman's lot is not acceptable. It's not seen from any place. It's just, will die. And, like, I've got a seven-generation farm that I, I've got to have mortgage money.
So would further discussion on this kind of help, do you think?
Yeah, and the only reason I'm here was, we, the points that we were talking about, the proposal that was put forward to the, to the council tonight, were different figures. Like, we were told one day to set up, one day for a movie to shoot, and the third day they take down, other than they're asking, the staff's asking for four days. Where did that come from? That didn't come from your staff that we met with. They asked for three days. So somebody's pulling another day out, so that means that we miss Tuesdays and Thursdays on the market.
Thanks. Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. We have no briefings this evening. Are there any petitions to present? Okay, we have no motions of congratulations, recognition, sympathy, condolences, and speedy recovery. We have no deferred motions, so we move on to reports. First up, we have Report number forty-six from the CAO.
Moved by Councillor O'Sannick, seconded by Councillor Holland, that Report number forty-six from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
So there are three clauses. Would anyone like any of them separated? Councillor O'Sannick?
Report two, please.
Number two. Okay, so first we will vote on the other two clauses. So Clause one, it's a word of contract, twenty-twenty model year, tandem axle, dual stream, rear-loading refuse packer. And Clause three, a word of contract, construction and reconstruction of sidewalk and bus pads, various locations.
Your worship, can I just ask a question on number one before we vote?
Oh, well, then we'll just separate all of them. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. So we'll just do them one at a time. So first, we'll just do Clause one, a word of contract, twenty-twenty model year, tandem axle, dual stream, rear-loading refuse packer. Councillor Chappell?
Yes, I'd just like to ask staff to confirm that this was an item identified in our budget that was approved for twenty-nineteen, and not a new purchase.
Ms. Kit?
Through you, your worship. This is a replacement vehicle that was identified in the two thousand and nineteen fleet budget.
Okay, so we will call the vote on Clause one. And that carries. Clause two, Rita Crest Parking Lot Operation and Rate Changes. Councillor O'Sannick?
Thank you, your worship. For this parking lot, I know about twenty people, just on my floor where I worked, that are parking there right now. And I know, Mr. Simple, we've been going back and forth today. So I just want to just make sure that I understand it correctly. So because it'll be so expensive then to park at Rita Crest because it's going to park and display a dollar fifty an hour, there is the option then of getting on-street parking permits, and there's not a waiting list right now for an on-street parking permit in that area, and that price would be comparable to what the England parking lot is right now. Is that right?
Mr. Simple?
Through you, your worship. Yes, so there is, there is on-street parking permits available in the area that's known as Area C, so that area in and around the Rita Crest home and around Providence Care. And there are permits available that are actively being given out to parkers that, that approach. There are waiting lists for the other surface parking lots, but there are permits available in the on-street area.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Neal?
Thank you. I've received, as I believe Councillor Kylie has some concerns from residents in the tower, and, and so I want to share some of those questions that I received. I understand that there are at least fourteen accessible parking permit vehicle holders that now reside in Rita Crest Towers, and that in addition, there are two known Rita Crest employees with accessible parking permits, and an unknown amount of visitors to Rita Crest Nursing Home with accessible parking permits on a daily basis. I guess the concern that was expressed, and I shared with, with staff from a call that I received this morning, was regarding if there's an event going on at Rita Crest, if they happen to drive back and there wasn't an accessible spot close by or handy to the tower, that they might well have to park deep in the parking lot and work their way back, which could be challenging depending on the weather, whether they're carrying groceries, that kind of thing. Do, what kind of assurances can staff give us that there will be adequate accessible parking spaces nearby the tower?
Mr. Simple?
Through you, your worship. Yes, so I think in, in general, in managing the public parking supply, certainly ensuring that there's a sufficient supply of accessible parking, and that that accessible parking is co-located to, to the entrances and exits where it needs, needs to be, is, is the primary, the primary way in which we approach the parking supply within a site. In, in the Rita Crest Parking Lot specifically, there are a number of, there are a number of entrances, both to the home and to the towers, in which we have, which we are positioning accessible spaces. Our observations of how that accessible parking is used now indicates that there's, that there is a sufficient supply. But that doesn't mean that we will set the number of spaces and then that is it. We make adjustments to that supply all of the time, and it'll be based on the needs of the parkers in the lot. There are requests to be near the entrances to the towers that we're able to accommodate with fourteen spaces that exist right now, and we're adding three spaces to the, just to the, the front entrance near the towers. And there's space to add additional, additional parking spaces along that front entrance as needed. We've also heard requests from the Rita Crest Towers tenants to provide accessible parking spaces at the, at the base of the rear entrance. And we're working with the Rita Crest Towers management team to, to ensure that that's a viable option. Right now, that entrance doesn't meet all of the standards that are required for us to designate those spaces, but that's something that we're looking at, and we'll be able to designate additional spaces in that area in the future. And, and, and the final piece, I think, we'll also be monitoring the usage of those spaces, both in, from the tower's tenants' standpoint, from other permit holders in their lot, and also the visitors that would be coming and going from the Rita Crest home site.
How quick and nimble can we be if we discover that there is an issue, if there's an event at Rita Crest, as there often is, and there's insufficient parking? How quick can that be remedied?
Through you, your worship. With, within a surface parking lot, we're able to designate spaces as needed. And so we have, practically, we have signage and posts that we move into locations that, when there's an additional demand. We do that now when we manage events in the downtown around the Leon Centre. We do it when we're managing events where there's road closers. We reposition and add accessible spaces as needed. We would do the same as part of the Rita Crest Parking Lot. And, you know, if there is an event that is, that is coming up, that is planned, part of the way that we manage the, the parking is how we manage those events.
And I understand there are at least two accessible van in, how many accessible van spaces will be getting, be made available?
Through you, your worship. Yes, so there are, there are two types of accessible spaces, primarily distinguished by their width. So the accessible van spaces are a wider space. There are, there are approximately five of those spaces currently within the, within the areas that are, that are designated in the Rita Crest lot. We'll be looking at that layout and that configuration, and we can make adjustments to that as part of our, as part of our line painting operation. Again, sort of making those changes based on the demand that is there to ensure that those accessible needs are met.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kylie?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Through you. The previous answer alluded to a question that I had pertaining to the relationship between this parking lot and the Leon Centre. Does staff anticipate that this will be used for event parking for the Leon Centre? It's about seven hundred meters away, so fairly quick walk for those who are able to walk. So is that something that is on staff's radar?
Through you, your worship. So the, it would likely support the Leon Centre and other events in the same way that it is now. So it is a public, or certainly a very large portion of it is a public parking lot that's accessible to the public for a flat fee of three dollars. So I would anticipate that the usage would be the same. And again, we would, we would ensure that there is the right balance to ensure that the, the tenants, the employees that are at Rita Crest Home, and the visitors that are coming and going, that, that is, that that supply is available.
All right, and follow-up to that is, would tenants get a notice when an event was coming ahead? Just because, similar to Councillor Neal, hearing from people and picturing the situation myself of a busy event, the parking lot's full, a senior resident living in that, in that building, even if they don't have an official accessibility permit, might need a closer proximity to park. Or if the parking lot's full, they won't be able to walk from down the road, especially in the winter. So just wondering what type of notification that they may or may not receive.
Through you, your worship. So there are two avenues that we would, that we typically approach changes in a parking situation. So the first is that, as part of this change, all of the, the tenants would be issued a City of Kingston parking permit. And part of that involves sharing contact information. And we share information out to our permit holders that is, that is relevant, or that would, that they may need to know. The other piece is that this parking would be managed on behalf of Rita Crest Towers, the property management. And so we have a, a relationship with, with that property manager. And if there are things that we need to share to them as our, our customer, we would share that information as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll call the vote on Clause two. And that carries by a vote of eleven to one. Clause three, a word of contract, construction and reconstruction of sidewalk and bus pads, various locations. We'll call the vote, please. And that carries. Okay, on to Report number forty-seven from the CAO.
Moved by Councillor Hill, seconded by Councillor Chappell, that Report number forty-seven from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted, clause by clause.
So there are two clauses. The first is fourth quarter operating budget report for twenty eighteen. Call the vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Councillor Hutchinson?
I just have one question, and that is, if I can find it. The, to do with the social services report. It said, for instance, it says here, lower than projected administrative expenses, net provincial funding allocations resulted in net savings of two hundred and four thousand dollars in Ontario Works Programme. I'm just wondering what programmatic considerations come into the meaning that people don't go without? Like, are they getting their money, and, or do they have to wait?
Okay, so question to staff. Mr. Laban?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Would that question be repeated? I was just left the council chambers for a moment. I didn't hear the entire question.
Fine. You were in transit and I was trying, I'm trying to look, okay. It's the part on page six of twelve. It's, um, lower than projected administrative expenses, net of provincial funding allocations, resulted in net savings of two hundred and four thousand in the Ontario Works Programme. And I'm just wondering what programmatic considerations come into making sure that people aren't, not getting their money? That's essentially it.
Mr. Laban?
Since I would have thought that would be pretty close to the vest, that kind of expenditure.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor. That, the, the savings in that portion of the programme are related entirely to administrative savings. So there's two aspects to the Ontario Works budget essentially. There's the actual benefits themselves, which are paid a hundred percent by the provincial government. And then there's the administration costs, which are shared fifty-fifty, or at least were until this year, fifty-fifty with the provincial government. The savings of two hundred and four thousand are essentially staffing costs, that it's a large staffing complement. So those administration costs essentially just represent existing positions that have gone unfilled for that year because of long-term leaves or positions that changed hands. So because it's a large staffing complement, the actual savings end up being a fairly significant amount, in this case, over two hundred thousand. amount, in this case, over $200,000.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Neil.
Yes, just a quick question, first to the treasurer. What would be the, with this addition, what would be the total amount in our working reserve fund? Don't need dollars and cents, but roughly would be good.
Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, through your worship. So the working fund reserve with this amount put in is probably up around the $8 million mark now.
I know that we were concerned, and this is a question for our acting CAO, I know we were concerned about being able to achieve our, our targets that we've set for ourselves in our strategic planning session. And I'm just curious, I applaud the fact that we have enough contingency when we have large projects, that we're able to maintain a working reserve fund, because that is definitely our rainy day fund if we need it in an emergency sense. But is, is there an opportunity to use some of that working reserve to achieve some of the, whether it's housing or some of our G8, our, our environmental goals?
Acting CAO Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So I think the treasurer would agree with me to say that we think $8 million is, is a much better number than when, where we were at the beginning of, of the year, and we would probably want to stay around that mark in case we had significant issues or situation that we needed to pull funding from that particular reserve fund. I do want to point out that the majority of the projects that were identified in the strategic priorities were significant projects, and we also deferred capital projects in order to be able to finance them. So we didn't look to the working fund reserve to finance any of those projects. Now, there may be a few, a few initiatives that could come up, like a study that we need to get done that may cost, let's say, $75,000 or $100,000, that we could look at the working fund reserve to help finance that. But for the most part, we would not, definitely not recommend that we pull from the working fund reserve to finance capital projects that we're looking at, at doing. But again, maybe to help finance some of the smaller initiatives that could reside in some of our operational budget.
And just a quick, I think this is a rhetorical, maybe a rhetorical question. Often, working reserve gets spent when something unforeseen comes up and there's a staff recommendation. But there's also a possibility, is there not, with council direction, to allocate those funds as well. Is that an accurate statement?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. I, I will get started, and, and the treasurer may want to add to, to this. Council can give whatever direction council would like to, to give to staff in terms of how to finance operations or capital projects and, and use various funds to do that. We would, we would strongly recommend that if there was an interest to look at any dollars in the working fund reserve, that that be done in collaboration and working with staff to make sure that there is an understanding of what we're trying to achieve, because there may be better ways to help finance some of the initiatives that council may be looking for.
Point taken, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll call the vote on clause one.
Just to elaborate a little bit, we're going to call the vote on paragraphs one through four, and then we will call the vote separately on paragraph five to accommodate councillor Bowles' pecuniary interest.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. So first the vote on clause, on paragraphs one to four of clause one. So now we will do the vote on paragraph five. Would you like to speak to it? Yep, councillor Chappell, you have the floor. So paragraph five is, so we've already called the vote on the first four paragraphs of clause one. So paragraph five is the one that begins, "That the net surplus generated from the municipal utilities operations, the amount of $5,5193 be allocated to from the following utility reserve funds," and that's listed.
Keep missing that. The only question I have is, I don't see anything for debt reduction in any of the reserves being moved around. And I, I did want to ask a question, but I, I misunderstood the way you broke up the question on a WSIB stabilisation reserve. I wanted to understand if that was a new reserve, if we're having an unfunded liability, but I will take that offline with staff afterwards, since it's not the appropriate time. Thank you.
Okay. So I will say this, at any point, if I call the vote and I haven't seen your hand, just say point of order or just wave it around. So I'm never looking to cut anybody off, but if I look, if I glance quickly, I don't see any hands, then I will, will call the vote. So I'm sorry if I missed your hand, councillor Chappell. Ms. Kennedy, is there anything that you did want to, to say in response to the question?
Certainly, thank you, through your worship. So I just wanted to point out a couple of things with respect to the, to the debt reduction. So the, all of the utility surplus has gone into the capital reserve funds, including the gas surplus, which actually goes into the municipal capital reserve fund. So those monies will be used for capital pay as you go in the future. So I would consider that debt reduction in terms of future debt that we will not have to issue, because we've increased our capital reserve funds, that, that savings account or that pay as you go piece. There was also a small amount, about $500,000 of that, that we also put in for transit surplus and the library surplus as well, went into their capital reserve funds. So that also will be used in the future for capital as opposed to issuing debt. So it, it's not current debt, but it will certainly be future debt that we won't have to be issuing.
Okay, so we will call the vote on paragraph five.
Never mind, don't worry about it.
And that carries. Okay, on to clause two, the provincial audit and accountability fund. We'll call the vote, please. Oh, we'll wait for councillor Bowles to return and then we'll call. And that carries. Okay, report number 48 from planning committee.
Yes, I'm pleased to present report number 48 duly moved and seconded. Thank you.
Moved by deputy mayor Neil, seconded by councillor O'Sannick, that report number 48 from the planning committee be received and adopted.
So there is just the one clause, approval of an application for zoning bylaw amendment special events in city-owned facilities, 103 Sunnyside Road, 303 York Street, 100 Days Road, 1350 Gardners Road and 53 Young Street. We'll call the vote, please. And that carries. Report number 49 from Heritage Kingston.
I'm pleased to present the report from Heritage Kingston duly moved and seconded.
Moved by councillor Doherty, seconded by deputy mayor Neil, that report number 49 from Heritage Kingston be received and adopted.
So there are three clauses. We will vote on them a whole, as a whole, unless anyone wants them separated. Okay, so we will call the vote, please. And that carries. Okay, we have nothing from committee of the whole, information reports. If you have a question, just raise your hand as I read through them. Number one, First Capital Place filming opportunities, deputy mayor Neil.
Thank you. A couple of quick questions of staff. I, it wasn't just the delegation that I had some comments about a need for greater consultation. I'm wondering when this, will there be a process that gets established when, when it's time to actualise this proposal?
Mr. Fowle.
Through you, your worship, and to the councillor and council, we're, we're trying to work with the vendors association to identify the opportunities first, and, and we do want to work with them as specifically, you know, that we've identified Tuesday as a potential opportunity for displacement. So I know the delegation indicated a four-day opportunity which would displace Thursday, but it would be, we'd work with our film liaison to identify a maximum potentially in, in, for this year of three days. So if it was just a Tuesday and, and we could work with our vendors association to come up with some opportunities and have further discussion, then that would be our process. We do currently work through our film policy and our booking process and allocations of our First Capital Place to ensure that we are communicating that exercise and working with other bookings. We don't have any current bookings of filming opportunities for this year. As indicated in the report, we have received a number of inquiries for possibilities, and, and we do want to work with our vendor association collaboratively to, to come up with a solution that might facilitate these filming opportunities, specifically in Springer Market Square.
Acting CAO Hurdle.
Thank you, and through Mr. Mayor, so I just want to add to what director Fowle indicated. So right now, we are in that process of consulting. There, there's nothing, obviously, that has been finalised. What we wanted to do is, we want to be proactive and bring the information to council, because we expected that council would hear from individuals once we started the consultation process. So we wanted to be proactive and provide you with that information. We are looking at multiple options in terms, one would be a relocation that would be quite close, obviously, downtown, right in the middle or in the, in the heart of the tourist area. The other one could be a financial compensation as well. So there are a number of, of options that we're exploring, and we're still in the consultation stages.
Are you familiar with, and it's worth looking into, Colona actually closes off their street for a block or two for their market. And it's just like our, when we do it for retail, it's very, very busy. And I think that that might allow for no loss or much less loss than going to a parking lot. So, worth a consideration. Thank you.
Okay, councillor O'Sannick.
Thank you, your worship. In the report, it said that it would be closed maybe for four consecutive days, so it would be three days, and then the one that would affect the market would be the Tuesday. So we'd be looking at wherever possible closing, like Springer Market Square, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and it would only affect the vendors association on Tuesday. Is that right? It's not really four days we're looking at?
And through you, your worship, and yes, and that's a correction I'd like to make here, council, that staff would commit to working with the vendors association to identify Tuesday as that opportunity for the, the financial compensation or relocation opportunity. And we'll continue to work with them to see if that's something that we can collaboratively come up with.
Thanks, and I did like what I heard from the delegate, that maybe we could close off Lower Princess Street on some of those days where we have filming. And I suppose that would require working with the downtown BIA to see if they're amendable for that.
Councillor Stroud.
Thank you. Yes, I'm in agreement with, with the delegate and councillor O'Sannick and councillor Neil in, and I, I think it's obvious that there's a win-win here. I'd like staff to really consider, strongly consider...
So, question?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking.
So the, well, the question would be hypothetical, if, if a street closure was going to be identified as a possible solution, which I believe is a win-win, would it take a council motion to make that happen? Or could it, could it come out of the work that staff is now doing?
Mr. Fowle.
Through you, your worship, staff would work with the necessary internal departments to go through the process of the road closure exercise and not require council approval to do that.
And I just wanted to finish by a quick explanation to the delegate, that this is not an actionable item tonight, and you won't see us voting on this.
Councillor Stroud, I appreciate that, but please respect its questions.
I, I think he deserves to know what's happening. Thank you.
I'm just, I'm just pointing it out as the chair of the meeting. Thank you. Any other questions on number one? Councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. In the report, it mentions the possibility of buyout, and I'm wondering where that money would come from? Would that be part of the deal with the production house to be built into the contract that could then be put through to the vendor? Or would that be shoulder by the city?
Mr. Fowle.
Through you, your worship, that would be the responsibility of the production company.
Thank you.
Okay, number two, John Counter Boulevard, Phase 5B design and project update. We have, yes, councillor Doherty.
Thank you, and through you, I just had a question regarding the, the width of the overpass, which was set in 2009. And I wondered if that included an anticipated, a study of anticipated foot and cycle traffic? Because with the expansion of the East End, we, I would assume that there may be more traffic than we are certainly experiencing at the moment.
Can you, yes, who would like to take that? Mr. Simpson.
Through you, your worship, just to clarify, your councillor, you were asking, was there a study of the pedestrian and cycling traffic completed as part of the 2009 decision? I see. I don't have information that suggests that there was a, a specific study related to the, to a pedestrian or cycling aspect. What would have been considered as part of the environmental assessment that fed into that process would, would have been the travel information and trip information that would have been, that would have been part of the environmental assessment? My understanding of the process in, in 2000, that ran from 2007 to 2009, is that it considered, it considered the risks to the project and options to contain cost?
Okay, seeing no other questions, we have no information reports, members of council. Miscellaneous business, we have several motions. Number one, that is requested by the Kingston Humane Society, city council proclaimed September 22nd, 2019 as Kingston Humane Society Day in recognition of the 135th anniversary of the Kingston Humane Society. Moved by councillor O'Sannick, seconded by deputy mayor Neil. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Number two, that notwithstanding section 3.1.4 subsection 5 of the illumination of city facilities policy, Kingston city council approved the illumination of city hall and Springer Market Square in red on June 19th, 2019 for World Sickle Cell Day, and that is requested by the Sickle Cell Awareness Group of Ontario, city council proclaimed June 19th, 2019 as World Sickle Cell Day in the city of Kingston. Moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Holland. And that carries. Number three, that notwithstanding section 3.1.4 subsection 5 of the illumination of city facilities policy, Kingston city council approved the illumination of city hall and Springer Market Square in red on June 13th, 2019 for St Lawrence College convocation, Kingston campus. Moved by councillor Kylie, seconded by deputy mayor Neil. And that carries. Okay, on to new motions. We have one new motion this evening, moved by councillor O'Sannick, seconded by... We have one new motion this evening, moved by councillor O'Sannick, seconded by councillor Kylie. Whereas Kingston City Council recognizes the threat climate change poses to our economy, our society, and our environment. And whereas Kingston City Council declared a climate emergency and committed to demonstrated leadership on climate action as a strategic priority. Whereas staff identified several strategies to reduce GHG emissions. And whereas staff recommend the corporate and community climate action plans be updated and combined as part of an overall climate change management strategy based on a framework of principles and practices for sustainable community such as the natural step strategy, partners for climate protection, or similar. And whereas this work will start in 2019 and include significant public and stakeholder engagement and be presented to council for final approval in 2021. And whereas a climate emergency requires immediate action, therefore be resolved that council approve a working group on community climate action to be co-chaired by councillor Doherty and councillor Kylie. And that the mandate of the working group on climate change be to promote, engage, educate, and challenge Kingston residents, institutions, and businesses to take immediate, effective, and inexpensive actions that will reduce GHG emissions in the community. And that as co-chairs councillor Doherty and councillor Kylie be authorized to appoint representatives to the working group on climate change from the following areas: Queen's University, St. Lawrence College, the school board, local school boards, Sustainable Kingston, the Kingston Climate Hub, 350 Kingston, KFLNA Public Health, Switch, and the Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum, being understand that the working group shall not exceed 12 members in total. And that the working group members are to be confirmed as soon as possible and the first meeting take place in June. And that the working group meet is necessary throughout summer 2019 in order to deliver ongoing key messaging to the community and complete its mandate by Q4 2019 with a presentation to council at that time. Councillor O'Sannick, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship. So as per our strategic plan, I think all of council is very appreciative that we have one commitment in our strategic plan, that staff is going to be updating our climate action plan that we have, you know, making updates to it, engaging the public by the year 2021, and that's super. Where this motion is different is that it's asking to form a working group for a very short period of time to come up with a list of quick wins at no cost or low cost. And just to sort of kickstart the entire process, what can we do as an entire community? As we see in the motion, it will have 12 members, it's going to start meeting over the summer and come back to council in early fall. So that's what this motion is about. Councillor Kylie and councillor, councillor Doherty, they're going to be leading the working group and I'm appreciative of that. And just coming back with a list of actions for this fall. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Neal.
Thank you. I totally support this and I appreciate the mover bringing it forward. Couple of questions. This, the actual appointments will be going through the nominations committee. They won't?
So, so my reading of, my reading of the, the motion, it says that co-chairs councillor Doherty and councillor Kylie be authorized to appoint representatives to the working group.
I guess my only issue with that, typically when we establish a, a working group, it's always been my experience that, and, and I'm not volunteering, God knows, I've got too many committees I'm sitting on already. But typically, there's an opportunity for anybody interested on council to put their name forward. And typically, we do appointments, I believe, through, through the nominations committee. So I'm just curious as to the rationale for this. And I apologize that I didn't bring this question up previously. I just assumed that it was, appointments would go the normal route through the nominations committee.
So, so councillor Neal, that's a good question. I'll give the mover a chance to, to answer it.
Thank you, your worship. It was due to timelines. If we go through nominations, we'll have to call the meeting, then we'll have to bring it back to council. So we're looking at July and already they want to, you know, the working group wants to have a meeting before we get into vacation season. So it was all about the timing, but just like with the task force on housing, like people did start to email us to ask to be considered. And it could be the same thing here too, that people will start to email us to, you know, be on the committee and councillor Kylie, councillor Doherty will, you know, see that and consider them.
I'm appreciative about how time sensitive this whole issue is. It would have been nice if this initiative had come sooner. And I guess my, my issue is if it doesn't go through the normal process where people throughout the community can apply and be considered through the nominations process, then there's going to be some disappointment. There's going to be some suggestions that perhaps this, this process isn't as open as, as our processes for appointments to working groups and committees normally are. I'm really supportive of this initiative. I'm supportive of the people that have put their names forward. I just wish that we weren't doing this totally in-house. And I'm quite happy to hear other comments from other councillors. I'm not going to move an amendment, but I might support one. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on my list is councillor Hill.
Thank you, your worship. So I'm looking at the, at the group here and actually already are 14 members because there are four school boards, just sort of to point that out as, but none of the members of the committee include staff. And so I, I, I'm a little bit concerned that this is, you know, kind of an, an exercise that's happening without the support of the staff that are already been kind of given direction to work on this. And I'm sure some marching orders have probably already gone out in terms of, of supporting this initiative. So I'm just wondering, how does that, how does, I guess, staff see this working together with the efforts that they're already undertaking to, to, to address this initiative?
I can see O'Hurtle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll, I'll start to address a question and Mr. Yugen Boss may want to jump in and add to that as well. So we have, we've had the chance to have a conversation with both councillor Kylie and Dorothy in terms of the expectation and what would be required as far as supporting these, this particular working group. We, we don't anticipate that it would require significant staff time because it is a, a working group that's looking at some fairly simple ways to try to get some messaging, education, and essentially some quick wins in the community. So probably more from a communications perspective that I would say and the coordination where most of the time is going to be spent. The other point that I'd like to, to address is around the process. So I, I do want to point out that we've had a number of working groups where we listed in the, the membership, a representation from Queen's or representation from the CRCA. So we had a number of groups that didn't actually go through the nominations committee per se, where the organization themselves would, would identify an individual from their particular organization that would be appointed to that working group. And they didn't have to submit their names and go through the nominations process. So we've had those working groups in the past as well, so I just wanted to point that out.
Councillor Hill, is that, is there anything else you would say? Okay, thank you. Next on my list is councillor Doherty.
Thank you, and through you. I'd like to thank the councillors for the comments. I, I appreciate where you're coming from. Really, the intent with this is the timing and, and we also consider that there is a larger process that is going to take place. So, and, so which will start in 2019 and will complete in 2021. So this was really just the, the intent here is to, as Acting Commissioner Hurdle just mentioned, is to find some really, some solutions that we know we can implement before, well before 2021 and perhaps immediately as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. So I'm the, 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 I understand, I, I, to Acting CAO Hurdle's point, comment, I think, about the composition, I think, and the timelines as well as others have mentioned, there isn't any direction in this motion that is specific to a staff report or council action or anything along those lines. It's just stating that there will be a presentation on some ideas in the community. So I think for that reason, it's, it is, it's, I, I can support it the way it is. The main thing that I would just mention though, and just because just in discussing it, we're kind of slipping back and forth between saying what we could do. And whereas I think this, the intention of this was always to focus in on the community's involvement in reducing greenhouse gas emissions. We spoke about this at strategic planning, we talked a lot about the corporation, there wasn't as much focus on the community. And so I know that's where this came from. And I think for that reason, having this group involved, bringing attention to community efforts, possible community efforts is, is really good and positive. But I just would, maybe based on some recent personal experience, caution that the mandate, however it is eventually phrased, and the process is completely clear to the public in terms of what they can expect, how they can expect to participate. Because if the composition consists of 12 members of whoever, whoever they, and I'm okay with, with the, the formation however it comes about, but members of the public will want to contribute to this. And if you're not facilitating an ongoing public engagement at this stage, I think that's going to be really important to clarify at the outset. But I'm happy to support it.
Thank you. Councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and through you, and thanks to my colleagues who made comments so far. I want to address briefly, comment councillor Hill made, about school boards. We definitely recognize that, and that was a discussion that I had with the Clerk's Office in preparing this. And there are certain individuals who may be interested in this working group who could fill multiple positions. So for example, someone that might work for the school board, Limestone District School Board and St. Lawrence College. There are, there are ways in which we can keep the, the numbers low for this so the committee can stay nimble and act quickly. And at the same time, ensure that we have this diverse representation of institutions. So just to that point, we are aware of it and we'll do our best to address it. And the reason why we've outlined these certain institutions is because the ICNI sector makes up so much of the emissions in our community. And it's very important that the leadership that staff has shown for Kingston can be shared clearly with these other community partners. And they can hopefully start to replicate some of what we're already doing in the corporation of the city of Kingston within their institutions to then further reduce emissions across the community, which is really important because as we discussed during the climate emergency, it's not only good enough for the city as a corporation to do it, but everyone within the boundaries of the city needs to too. So that's kind of the spirit of the, the representation of the group. And another thing, hearing concerns about potential public engagement and questions about whether or not this will be an open process, I think it's fair to say that all these meetings that we have, like other committee meetings, will be open for the public to attend. So that is an opportunity for people to stay engaged and to see the, the workings of this working group. So obviously, I encourage everyone to vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Chappell.
Through you, your worship. Looking at the motion, I do agree with councillor Neal about the appointment process. It's sort of outside. So it begs a question if other committees from council can be formed as well, such as taking out the words "climate change" and put "debt reduction" or "property tax assessment committee." And if there'd be any objection for myself and other councillors proposing a committee of similar structure that does not have a financial commitment. And I'm assuming that there is no financial commitment through council for this motion?
So we need to go to the mover. Councillor O'Sannick?
Yes, no financial commitment. And we're hoping that the action items that come out would be like really low cost or no cost.
Okay. Councillor Stroud.
Thank you. I'm standing a lot today because I really hurt my back last week and sitting is difficult. Okay, so this is a really interesting motion. It's a really interesting motion. So before, and, and there's been some excellent points. So I'm just gonna, just get everyone's attention back on the motion itself, hopefully it doesn't timeout here, and of what it actually does, so, and what it doesn't do. So it is, yes, it is an unusual process of appointments. It is self-appointed to councillors that both obviously had a, a hand in writing, writing of the motion, at least you would presume. And, and, and that is normally a vote of council when we say you, you volunteer for, you know, the ITP, everybody volunteers and we vote on it. We do it that way for a reason because we represent the entire city and then it's a democratic process. This is more of a, okay, sure, you volunteered, sure, you go ahead, kind of a process. It's not really the same thing. And I, and I, and I agree with councillor Chappell that we start doing that kind of thing, where do we draw the line about what kinds of ad hoc committees and working groups we set up? Now, we also have a system of committees and working groups, wide system already in place, heritage, you know, accessibility, all the different committees, some of which have working groups that do this exact thing. They're all composed of community members. It's a less formal setting than a committee, the working groups are, and allows them to do this kind of work quickly with, with quicker timelines. And, and we, we have a process for this. We have procedures in place for this through the committee bylaw. This doesn't end run around all of that structure. And that's the problem. The problem isn't with the intent. The intent is excellent. The problem is with, as councillor Neal started, the appointment process is irregular and somewhat arbitrary. The two councillors that are on the committee are, are the ones that are just volunteering and that it would make it so if we voted through tonight. And I would say if we followed the regular procedures and we came to a working group that was doing this work, that would be great. And then I think, wait a minute, don't we already have the Kingston Environmental Advisory Forum? And sure, they've been unproductive in the past with a mandate that was bloated or it took, took it in different directions, but we just redid the mandate. We just updated the mandate. They haven't even met since we did that. Now, they may not meet very much over the summer and if we're, if we're really want it to be quick, then maybe they need to strike a quick working group. Maybe we need to tell Keefe to get working on this exact thing. The exact, all the wherethes, everything that's in there, we tell Keefe to start working on it, strike a working group and get it done and give us that presentation in the fall. But that's not what this motion does. This motion says councillor Kylie, councillor Doherty, we'll get probably some people that they already have picked out. And that's the third aspect that I'd just like to point out. These people have been saying things about climate change for years, some of these people that are going to be on this working group. Okay? So it's not new information that we're going to receive. It's the, it's the same people. What, I would say if, if something new coming from council was going to be done, is how do we reach the rank and file of Kingstonians that want to do something for climate change in the community, the people that we haven't asked yet? That's who we need to be going after. The people that haven't already been given a voice. This is going to appoint people that already have a voice. And it's doing it in a very narrow way with two councillors that we know are very close in ideology. And I would say that's maybe a fourth problem is that maybe if the two councillors there were more representative of the broad spectrum of the community or of the council table from the point of view of ideology, it might be okay. Regrettably, I will have to oppose this motion. Thank you.
So, thank you. Next on my list is councillor Bowman.
Thank you, your worship, and through you. So I had come in originally ready to support this and then this is why we have these conversations and these debates. And so I think it started, my reservation started with kind of what councillor Neal brought up, which was sort of how we're going about this. And then followed up by councillor Chappell, which was, are we opening up Pandora's box with this? And now we're just going to have kind of working group after working group after working group kind of outside the process. And I think councillor Stroud kind of hit the nail on the head with this. The, the concerns that I have here rests with the fact that although the intent is really good, it's, do we already have the tools in place that are underutilized to actually do this? Have we explored all those tools? And in hearing more and more and looking at the composition, I kind of realized that it really, this is about the public and so it should almost be done by the public. Whereas, as councillor Stroud pointed out, a lot of these voices have already kind of been heard. So I just would not want to see an effort in futility. So I just would not want to see an effort in futility where we're going out and rehashing some of the same things that have already been done, and then there's going to be a big criticism at the end, which was they were kind of all handpicked, what really came out of it. None of those recommendations are not things we haven't heard before. So in my mind, I think this is something where maybe it needs, I'd hate to see it fail, but maybe it needs to be gone over again, in a sense, to come back to see if there's a better way to accomplish this. Because if you put it to a vote tonight, and you have a few people vote against it, it's just not going to look good. So in my mind, I think it would almost be better to, to defer this and, and have another go at the wording and what tools might accomplish something like this. So I guess I'll move a motion to defer, to give an opportunity to sort of have that conversation.
So a motion to defer to?
To the next council meeting, just enough time to sort of rework it.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, or moved by Councilor Bohm, to defer this motion to the next council meeting. Is there a second or?
No. Point, no point of order.
Point of order?
Yeah. If you defer it, can they change it?
So, so by, by definition, when you defer a motion, it will come back the same way, but it can then be amended. And I'm going to guess that that's probably, I think, the suggestion of the councillor is that it'd be very difficult to amend it based on all of the feedback to do that right now. So I'll just, just propose that. So motion to defer, is there a second or? There needs to be a second or. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Neal. Any debate or discussion with respect to time or place? Yes, Councilor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. I'll use my rookie card here, I just want to be sure that I completely understand this. Deferring this motion, I know you just tried to answer this, so forgive the redundancy, means this motion comes back exactly the same? Next?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilor Kylie.
My apologies, I know you just addressed this, but just trying to make sure that I understand the process clearly. By deferring this, we're just saying, we want to vote on the exact same thing, as is right there, right now, and wait another two weeks to do that?
So, so here's what I would, here's what I would suggest, and I'm going to make these comments as neutrally as I can and just speak to the process. There are effectively two things that could happen. Number one, there is an option for the mover to withdraw the motion with the intent of bringing it back at the next meeting, which would allow time for reworking, rewording, to bring it in new form. The second option is that this motion can be deferred with the intent that an amendment would then be put on the floor when it comes back that would address any of those changes. So effectively, there are two different routes. I would suggest that perhaps withdrawing the motion is probably the simpler one, but a motion to defer can, can do that as well. Councilor Osannick, do you have a point of order?
I just wanted to move, okay, we'll withdraw it, to work on the wording, to submit it for next Tuesday, for then the June 18th meeting, with new wording.
Okay. So, so the mover has suggested to withdraw. Who's the second or? So the second or has to agree.
That's fine.
Okay. So the motion then has been withdrawn. Okay. Okay, so moving on, we have no other new motions. Are there any notices of motion? Okay, Mr. Clerk, ask for minutes, please.
Moved by Councilor Chappell, seconded by Councilor Bohm, that the minutes of City Council Meeting Number 2019-15 held Tuesday, May 21st. I'll start again. That the minutes of City Council Meeting Number 2019-15 held Tuesday, May 21st, 2019 be confirmed.
And that carries. There's some tabling of documents, a number of communications. Is there any other business? Mr. Clerk, ask for bylaws, please.
Councilor Kylie, you're excused for the first two bylaw votes.
Moved by Councilor Hutchison, seconded by Councilor McLaren, that bylaws four and five be given their first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Councilor Hutchison, seconded by Councilor McLaren, that bylaws four and five be given their third reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Councilor Hutchison, seconded by Councilor McLaren, that bylaws one, two, six, and seven be given their first and second reading.
And that carries.
Moved by Councilor Hutchison, seconded by Councilor McLaren, that clause 11.36 of bylaw 2010-1 be suspended for the purpose of giving bylaw six three readings.
And that carries.
Moved by Councilor Hutchison, seconded by Councilor McLaren, that bylaws three, six, and seven be given their third reading.
And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Councilor Bohm, seconded by Councilor Hill. And that carries. Thank you very much.